But I give you all our sheet, what your fund balance is. Uh, Mr. Mountain, your, what I projected for you to end up this year with twenty twenty was four hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars. Now that's taking into consideration that you spend every bit of your twenty twenty budget, and we know you won't. The, the history of Royal Bridge, you don't spend every penny of your twenty twenty, so. It's just in the first.
Well, it says here, right?
It is.
This is one hundred, and she's saying this is what you're going to get. That's what we hear from the ones, uh, four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred seventy-four. Four hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred seventy-four.
Listen, I'm not gonna spend that contingency, I'm not gonna spend that one hundred thousand dollars, I don't plan on, so that, that goes back.
That will raise your four ninety-three by five.
Five, that's right. I mean, I don't, and, and this is for seeing, I, I don't plan on breaking it up.
So, you know, you will have a high fund balance come twenty twenty than what, but we're just projecting right now, and we project at one hundred percent expense. Just to be precise.
Which we're not.
That's right. We're not.
And then. They were like, they were like, I didn't see, you know, I, I don't have, he don't know.
He, he was lying there.
Yeah, it's very close to the place. Yeah, he don't like it.
Yeah, maybe over here.
He, or his friend.
The project has got split up, this, this is over here.
If you, if you look at your revenue twenty twenty-one, Commissioner Mountain, the one million nine thirty-six, that would match your revenue type that, that you have for your revenue.
Yeah.
I, I put you a little mark down there by the court approved, and then your expenditure is back to your expenditure.
Yeah.
And what your expenditures will change now that you've added the hundred thousand to a foot purchase, I'll go in and amend that.
Yes.
But you're gonna offset by you telling me you're not gonna spend your contingency this year.
That's right. I don't plan on, I don't plan on.
Yeah. Now, we do need to look at, uh, you did send me, and I, I sent, I gave everybody a copy of the memo that Commissioner Mountain sent me, uh, dated June the twenty-fifth. He said that he's asking for a change in his former salary. So you're not gonna address that, because we can't change your salary unless the court's.
I understand that, and, and, uh, that's, that's what I talked about today, you know? We set our former salary, uh, two years ago in reference to what a sergeant made at two years. Well, the sergeants have.
About one or two years.
I'm sorry, I had to add the sheriff's office, they make more. Well, their salary has went up, and our former salary had went up to match that, and that's what was all about, to stay even with what a supervisor, a sergeant, was making out of the sheriff's office. And I don't know how they got it, maybe it was that little extra we give them, uh.
With a key.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's probably happened enough, but we've gotta keep our, our foremen in line with what a sergeant makes out there at the sheriff's office, because they have, to me, they have a great responsibility than what a sergeant has out there. I mean, just think of all the equipment that, that they're over in, the, the hands, uh, the hands, and, and working the road bridge here and there. So, that was my deal, we, we can't just, you know, pretty soon we ain't gonna buy them, and the sergeant get a little more, and we got a big gap. Right now, it's, it's about twelve hundred dollars a year, the gap is, and, and I, I would wanna make my foreman attractive what the, the sergeant's made. That's not, which okay, you heard the person.
That would put the foreman's pay right now at thirty, thirty-eight thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, and then would you have, then would employees receive the right instead of the right?
Sure.
Okay.
Because the, the sergeant could shift and receive the right.
Wait, is somebody else's foreman's like a sergeant?
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. Your friend?
Yeah.
Everybody has a sheet.
So what do you got on that?
In a normal year, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Or, uh, did you get the question?
How about Jake first, Detective? What are the hundred dollars a year? Seven hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars, I believe. I don't know, I think.
I'm not calculating this way.
Yeah, one off.
Be about fifty dollars per paper, you press.
There's twenty-six paper.
Yes. And we have each of y'all put in here all of the, uh, road bridge, y'all have a sign on it for employees. Now, some of you don't pipe wire, those high line, some of you have a little bit, we have to act the structure, that's the same for all four precincts. Yes. I think some of you may not have a per liter table, Mr. Leonard, or you don't.
Okay.
This is the, the structure that we, that the court for a couple of years has got that way.
Okay. Does that cover your budget, Mark?
No, we got no.
Have you?
Collection, the collection.
What are we gonna do on that? Do I need to?
Uh, you, the price on your expenditures for this year running a little bit low on your contract services.
Yeah.
You, your average, your average spend for the year will be about eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, and you have seventy-five hundred left.
Right.
So, the court might want to look at increasing this conference.
I think I did, because I, I almost don't have them to cover.
Exactly.
So, yeah, what do you suggest that we raise it to?
Uh, I would put it to at least nine, if not ten. The court's decision.
Yeah, well, then.
I'm gonna be judge for practice tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, what am I doing without the?
Yeah.
And I, I propose to the court that we do raise it to, to nine thousand.
Okay, now those two items, the foreman's, and that right there, I won't wait till we get through everyone's budget. Let's go through all four budgets, and then we'll come back and make a decision after we get through the budgets. Hold that up. Okay.
I'm looking for my tablet, I mean, I want to. I'm acting up a bit.
Now, we don't go walk there before, we walk there, don't do it. What we're discussing, once we get through all four budgets, we'll make decisions. So you got it, thank you, partners. Are you clear, Parker, on the contingency and the, and the, uh? What do you call it?
Fund.
Fund, yeah. You, you, you're good on that?
Yeah, let me ask you something, Sandy, on this, uh, equipment purchase. You've got, we've got ninety-four, two fifty, and then, uh, and actual with eighty, eighty over twenty-seven.
Now, that's for three thousand nine ten.
Where's the, uh?
The twenty twenty budget, it's right there by the, you say, see your fourth column on your expenditure, your budget was four.
All right, I see it.
You say that, that's where you actually, you purchased that vehicle, that equipment this year, you paid for that, your budget.
Right.
We had actually budgeted revenue and expense for that, because your intention was to find the exit, and we never came back to court to get permission to find that, and said, no, I thought it, it was too late to finance it, so we have revenue to take for that out of this one balance. And we still didn't have time for that.
Anything else in your program?
Uh, um, you're good.
Okay. You'll go, we're gonna move Brandon's? Sergeant in particular, I don't, Brandon's, we got, I'm, I'm already gonna fill all around, look at everything, it's, uh, it's, we're good. Now, part of, and, and, I don't, we refuse to hear them, part is the contingency, we don't have the numbers, we can't measure it, but they're gonna come up.
Yeah.
I, 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 I agree with you, we raised up.
Now, Brandon's revenue, he did have a capital finance budget, so I took that out, so his revenue did a lot of worlds of debt, so we took that finance out, and I added your bond.
Yes.
As well as required, but they called it a different one. I added one hundred dollars for bond, but the rest is, is the same.
You got bond?
And I, I tried.
You don't post that thing?
I tried to align with what he has to, is that, I, I tried to, that, and I gave you all the copy of the sex schedule, so you can say, we're the best.
Are you planning on purchasing any of your work up this year?
No, I mean, I, what we got right now, too, there are nobody troubles, some of them holding tractor, we, we may lose it, we do that, but we have fifty thousand dollars in there right now, uh, equipment purchases. Uh, we bought a patch truck this past year, we, we'll, we'll look at that, that's something that we can kick around, look at, if we need to, uh, increase that if we can, once we get our numbers in, and so we'll always look forward to those. So, um, we can't always go back and add a little bit more to that if we need to, but we'll, we'll get those numbers in, we'll double more.
That's right.
And then that's kind of what we're inching on, everything else is fine, we've done, we've done great job, so I don't want to see a problem. We have, we have a scheduled payment, are being made, it hasn't affected our budget one bit. Uh, as far as the contingency stuff, we'll wait and see, right now, we're gonna pack that in there, and that's okay, uh, we'll wait until, until we figure out what we need there.
Yeah, what would it hurt, uh, to, like you said, bump that number up for equipment purchase, you don't use it, you guys.
Well, you don't use it, just go back and do it here.
That's right. It goes into your fund, it's a, yeah, it does the same.
I think all I've got to boil down to is how you are, and, and.
My word.
And you got a commission to spend some like this stuff, and, you know, or like one, like he said, not gonna put over, I know, but, I mean, it's all, we all do a good job.
It's all our jobs, keep each other in check, that's, that's.
Y'all have to keep managing, right, exactly.
That's just a little dirty, you know?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm good with that.
You're good with it?
And then, and then to back on, that's, that's, because I really look at that, what, looking at the, the, you know, the foreman's, like, I get, I really look at that. Um, I know what we talked about, as partners say it, but, uh, we got a lot of other issues still we need to handle.
And Brandon's collection station is good.
Yeah, he did a good job.
He's not.
What, what is it?
Nine thousand. That, yeah, Brandon's speaking, uh.
Your, your collection?
Nine thousand six dollars is what we pay him for that.
That's, that's your salary.
Uh, you talking revenue, is there?
Total expense, but it for his collections, twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
He has a big contract service, he, he does, he, he has a big, um.
New laundry.
New laundry.
Okay.
Uh, I'm good on everything, Sandy, just, uh, uh, I'd like to put, I, I hope next year is best, but to be precise, I'd like to put ten thousand dollars in, in comp time. I'm up this year, but I don't remember the seven employees, so I adjusted that this year, but next year, I'd have to avoid the ten thousand for comp time, and then did wanna fix electricity, whatever that was.
You mean, you just put that, like, where we messed up on electricity last year, you just put it here.
Royal Bridge, sure. Yes, ma'am. And then, uh, I'd like to raise that equipment purchase to a hundred thousand, just like, I'm not planning on buying it, but you don't know what's gonna happen. And then, uh, the capital outlay only twenty-five thousand instead of two hundred.
And if you look at Keith's fund balance, he and I have both talked about this, he has that two hundred thousand dollars coming out two times, because he budgeted it, um, for, for this year, and we're in the process, we're gonna get permission to bid that building out of court this time. And then I put it right back into the twenty twenty-one budget, so his fund balance kinda looks a little distorted, and, uh, but we'll get that.
It's right now.
Yeah, it, it looks a little bit low right now, but once we make these changes.
You understand, I'm, I'm not gonna do two hundred thousand dollars.
And that you just changed it by, instead of the two hundred, you added ten, so you dropped it by hundred seventy-five, and you added back fifty.
Yes, and then. I would like to raise also my, uh, uh, part-time help by five thousand.
Or is it forty?
Some, sometimes I thought I was gonna try to contract out, it's not working out, I'm on the other, seasonal help.
Your contract service line, right, and Commissioner has fifty-three thousand five hundred, and you don't spend twenty-four hundred, do we have some deal that's coming in that we're not aware of?
We're gonna try to do some chip selling outside.
So that's where you're gonna pay for your chip sales, huh? And I did add your bond, but you, you will leave bond in January of the first. And I took down.
Did you get that forty thousand or how?
Yes. I did forty, made eighty for help to forty, your comp hundred and ten, your capital outlay to twenty-five, and you want your equipment purchase count to one hundred.
So, but, so, so the comp dropped?
Yes, I, I'm, just, 'cause I, I paid a lot of overtime this year because I'm short of hands, I hope I'm, I hope I'm not short employer next year. I'm fixing to move one of my part-time people to a full-time place, to positions, so that will put me back where I should be, which will lower my, uh, part-time help, and, so, so it's getting all straightened out.
And on your collection station, you have a contract service line of sixteen thousand. You're gonna average about sixteen thousand this year, so are you doing with leaving that there?
Yes, and that, and, now, and that's something we gotta talk about now, and, and, and I'm actually covering out Royal Bridge next year on the East Texas Council Governor Grant, you can only get it three years in a row, and get the layout here. So, I've gotta figure out some way to fund that cleanup day for next year. And I don't mind funding out Royal Bridge, it's part of its own Royal Bridge, it's all part of recent quarter.
So, you made it this year?
I've had it three years in a row, yes, I'll, no, this is the third year, this, this, this payment that we get in September will be our third grant holder.
But, but you have to remember, this sixteen thousand includes that grant, and when we get the money in, the money goes into the revenue line. We can't, we, we're not allowed to put revenue into the expense line, so this sixteen thousand is the budget to include your cleanup.
On the expense side.
So, it's, so, but what we're gonna do, is it gonna pull us off that I don't bring in an extra revenue?
If, if we will not budget for that revenue in the general fund, but.
Okay, I, you've got help with that, I'm, this, you're part of, I mean, general fund, I, you know?
Sure, sure to be, I'm sorry.
As long, as long as we're coming out of town, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I, I can call on, you know, sort of general fund.
We'll, we'll be fine with it.
I would like to, you know, the best.
Okay, how much is it, how much was it?
Three thousand. And that just kept Keith not have to pick up trash on the road.
I, I, I hear that.
Well, it's not even more than three thousand.
Because a lot of people don't have money to dump, so they don't take the road, and then you have to send the handout to what we get, and still have to, the doctor might add it to all of them.
We, we had a situation this year, we targeted out some tires, which, which, we, something ended up right, but we had a little bit of tire that, that, that dumped on the side of the road. So we should've taken them, and we would've saved later, we'll pick them up, but we're going to take them. Uh, when it does, I don't know if we'll talk about that later, but I would like to see the, uh, the part-time person at the, uh, collection station, if we give an embrace in society, I'd like to see that go on to him, to, to the part-time employee there. If we want to do a three percent.
Yeah, you're talking about cross-forward.
Yes.
Like this one, okay?
Normally, we don't, I think we did last year, was the first year we get even part-time.
No, I, I.
It's not what they said.
That would be a discussion.
When you decide.
You said you're part-time employees, what you were saying.
This collection, this, this is different on the, on the Royal Bridge part-time, I, I do, they all make different amounts. All I'm saying is if we, if a one-up, if a one-up able to do an increase, I'd like to include this employee here, this part-time employee at the collection site, which is.
Is that all?
That's it, I'm good.
You got all that, same here?
I'm good.
Okay.
And I make these changes, and then similar to you, it's not that sure that I don't have them, you know, but I've done it correctly.
Yeah.
Sometimes I get off, I, and you get a signal over there when I.
Yeah. That's usually, that's usually on the general side.
I may adjust some of this stuff when we find out what our revenue is, I'll adjust some of this stuff, uh, from here and there.
Yeah.
To make sure, I'm, I'm good, all of us left, do that, if we want to try to run on balance, but.
Do you?
The only thing I'd like to say, Sandy, is raise that, uh, extra help salary line by five thousand, like thirty thousand instead of twenty-five.
Okay.
Everything is fine.
You don't have a collection, do you?
No.
Now, if I catch your equipment purchase, if you, um, that last year, you, you don't need any equipment, you're good.
Well, I, I don't know, that's where you guys asked me about the contingency a while ago, uh, so when we find out what are doing, thanks, so we might put it in the contingency or, or.
Okay, okay. And if you don't have a collection, start in the top, you're good here?
Good.
That's my largest budget.
We send all our.
You send all your best present one?
Yeah.
Now, I did, uh, attach your court administrator, um, y'all voted in Monday's court to, I, I adjusted her salary, but you still have a part-time salary, a seasonal employee, that I believe was supposed to do some road work or something, and do y'all gonna keep that in there? What it does is, you four guys have to cover this salary, so it just makes me put more money, take more money from you to cover this salary, but, you know, it's, it's a part-salary money bill, so if you, you know, we can adjust.
Part-salary, I thought, it's gonna be just Christie's salary to manage, Alicia's salary.
Oh, y'all voted for all four.
Whatever.
Everybody voted for nine sixty-nine, and Alicia was nearly there, but she wasn't blocking her, I wanted to fix that. But my question is, do you wanna make a change in our composition?
If we don't scream it, where's it go?
It, it.
It's gonna go back in the Royal Bridge or something.
It stays in that fund, and then I, I look at the fund balance and can adjust what y'all have to contribute for next year.
Yeah, and don't go back to the general.
Only reason I like, only reason I like it in there is if we have another, unless, pray it don't happen, but should we have another deal where we have to have somebody to oversee things and stuff like we had in the past? It keeps us from having to come back to court to get permission to go hire that part-time person.
How much do we have in there right now, the part-time?
Seventy-six, I think.
Well, we probably need to keep that in there, because we still have to have a part-time person to help with the road mileage. And we've, we've looked at several applications, but we had to find anybody that understands the system, uh, have to do that.
Well, I'm just leaving it in there.
Yeah.
Do that part of it, then.
Uh, we've got to do that, I don't know. Uh, ladies and gentlemen.
I did, uh, I told you, y'all, the, and this is out of the appraisal district budget, the allocation for what we pay the, the appraisal district, this is just FYI for y'all. Your budgets this year are a little bit high for what you pay for your special road tax collections, so I think there's enough funded, that budget this year to cover the increases coming down for next year, so I didn't adjust your appraisal issue, kind of, in your budget statement.
I'm trying to listen to that, check it out.
We came.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Now, what we normally do is budget, the budget application, the budget allocation at the top, you can see this year for Manset County, uh, last year we were at three hundred seventy-one thousand, this year it's went to three eighty-three. Now, that will change because as we're getting protesting, that, this is based on the letting, so this isn't set figures, okay, these are just estimates that the appraisal district did for their budget, but we, I did raise the appraisal district in our general fund a little bit, because it'll, it'll, it, it will, it'll change there possibly.
Okay.
The next thing I want y'all to look at, we didn't go over the sheriff's department and the sheriff's department.
Uh, that's over. That, uh, go back and decide, yeah, let's go back and decide what we're gonna do on this foreman. You heard, you heard what?
Yeah, you guys, you, you can approve that or not, but if you're not watching, the, the sheriff's department sergeant will continue to go up and, and approve it, and we'll have my hand. You know, I don't know, Matt.
And if, and if, I calculated thirteen hundred dollars, uh, difference, like, difference, thirteen, eighteen percent. You said that's a fifty dollars of paper.
Yes.
Twenty-six paper.
Pretty much, but he keeps us in that, whatever they make, surely, I think you all agree that they have more responsibility than the sergeant has out there.
What, y'all think we're, we're in disorder?
I'm pretty sure it's all just free.
What, what, uh, we're. What's your idea, Danny?
Um, well, I think that, I got two, certainly, the work, it shoots this money, uh. I don't know, what, a hundred bucks, that's.
Thirteen.
Or thirteen, I, I wouldn't have a problem giving it, I think that's probably, probably fair to him, they do a lot of.
Well, you know, you get hammered, you know who get hammered over there.
Or just.
They don't get all that, right, this is two years ago, to keep their salary, to put a sergeant in place, how you gonna be hammered on that?
Well, I mean, uh, they, 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 we, 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 the budget would be the same, and then, uh, the commissioners would get their. I mean, they're gonna say, nah, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, what, what will come.
And then I can already tell you that when I got back to my desk on Monday for the budget hearing, saying we adjusted salaries. And then I can already tell you that when I got back to my desk on Monday from the budget hearing thing, we adjusted salaries. I had someone sit in my chair because it is on Zoom and they're watching it. And the first, the first comment was, we were told in our letter that it only essential needs, so we didn't address any changes. And so we, I'm already hearing, you know, comments.
Well, yeah, and that's why I thought that was teased for the day. So, so the next year, we're gonna be an issue.
Well, I, I never adjusted, not supposed to.
No.
I think you do, what you had, those, those salaries that were adjusted and, and there was letter sent in to the alderman's office, like, we sent our letter out, said, if you believe you have essential needs, send it in. They sent that in as an essential need.
But it also addressed that the commission court would address the tax law. And so a lot of people felt like they shouldn't ask for their employees any type of raises. And some just decided to do it, and so the ones that did were addressed and the ones that didn't ask are not being addressed, so.
Well, not all of them, that's got addressed.
I just want my people aware that it is.
Well, you ain't got addressed, they did, they did well. Well, the decision.
So, you know, we might have to have another session if someone comes back and asks for better reports, I think to be fair, we should hear their request to file, to be fair.
There's a letter there, I think, probably.
Who's gonna have another issue like we have here? Nobody.
It's the courts to see.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, who's gonna have another issue like we have here? There's nobody gonna have one. Or somebody's, uh, salary would compare to another salary, that's gonna be great.
Well, that's what we done had for some of the discussion of that, when you try to keep all of them equal. And you let them out.
Right.
At some point out, they're gonna get unequal.
Well, and that's what we gotta watch, and that's what we need to all the coordinators, we made them, we made them equal. And that's what we need to do, gotta order, we, we base their salary two years ago on what the sergeant's made.
Now, I'm not arguing. I'm just, I'm just laying it out there.
I think you've done a good job on, uh, by, you, you've made the coordinators all the same, we have all the J P offices now the same, uh, you're gonna make all your forms the same. And I think the only ones that we haven't really addressed is your deputy clerks. We have this way, so, you know, that might be something that we're not making a look at when we, when we talk about that. That's just, I agree with that.
What, how much did we first off?
Um, I think you go get what Karen's making, but I personally think that our chiefs should be making exactly what the deputy admins or. We've got, they have more experience, I mean, I mean, mine's got ten years, we've got authority. We've got, uh, now, this is from what I'm looking at, you have a district clerk deputy, you have a county clerk deputy, and you have a tax office deputy. And I think Taffeta's the highest, she's at thirty-seven, uh, Eddie's like in like twenty-nine, and Joey is about like twenty-eight. So we kinda have a unletting field there on deputy. If you get those adjusted, I think pretty well across the board, they're pretty.
It's very, it's very way, don't you?
Pretty much, yeah.
And it's, and that, I mean, it's your decision, they don't.
I took the letter, I mean, I'm just gonna address, I took the letter, you know, I read the letter and pretty much said, this is what it was gonna be, so I didn't send anything to send, because I'm about to write the letter. Karen called me to see if I wanted to do a budget here. And I called, what's the point, the letter states, this is what we're to do. We're gonna go with this budget for next year, and that's what we didn't count before. So it wasn't there.
I read the letter, to have approved the letters, I know that. Unless you have a central need or concern, something you particularly want to discuss with the court, just understand you can get the same budget as last year. And if you felt like there was an essential need or.
But it said salaries that y'all.
It said salaries would be adjusted by the court. Uh, so, I mean, if someone had a, I mean, an essential need, which we had saw, uh, then I, I think we addressed, but now, I consider we're misunderstanding or I guess we had two different interpretations.
There can't be that much difference in money, and we, we just, just adjust everybody, get everybody on the same plate over this year. Can't be that much money difference in, in the district first.
Oh, no, there's, there's, yeah, there's not.
It's, it's.
We can, we can come back when we do the, um, when y'all look at salaries and y'all look at that.
But you're, you're right, you're not that, I'm, 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 let's get it straight, let's try to, I mean, we don't have any more problems with it, yeah.
Well, until, until they get out of line.
Well, we ain't gonna get out of line. You know, what we need, but we, I don't know how we get it in the pegs.
I mean, the sheriff's office, you said two years ago.
Well, because we agree with that, after the two-year ban, we see they were one percent.
And they're, we're out of line. So, I mean, and that's what, that's what gets you out. I mean, when we get to one percent, yes, we, we sold, we, the three cents, we said we're making one cent. We're doing it right, but if you're not talking about, these are supposed to be state equivalent.
We very seldom give more than this during the year, I think that's the part-time, I'm every percent, can't give a.
No, you're one percent, you know, the sheriff needed it.
That's right.
They were, I mean, we had people going out the door, we were trying to show that there.
Absolutely.
And I did, I'm here to do again.
God, our Congress, maybe we need to look at that, uh, and try to keep it. You say the J D.
The J D's are all, they all, they all act the same, they're, they're, the Florida acts the same in their part-time.
But we did that six years ago.
You did that.
We did that last year.
You got that last year.
And I think, and so that's why, and that's what we did this year with these.
The court administrators, and now if you wanna do it.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Well, I think all of you know that it is early, but it's not, that, 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 that's just if you want to go into that, to adjust the salaries, like, like we said, like we said, we said, that, that foreman was gonna make the same as the sergeant. I mean, we got the paperwork, yeah, it's standing, we looked at it, said, yeah, this is what the foreman's gonna make, what a sergeant makes, it's first-line supervisor out there. And now all of a sudden, you know, it's, they're, it's got out of line.
And I'll let me remind you as well, once the court approves these salaries increases, it's the elected official responsibility. First of October, and I'll modify that, by letter, to increase these salaries. If you don't get Dan that letter, then this don't happen.
Yeah. And I, I think we've always done that, I mean.
Yeah, that's where we're gonna need your help, because these elected officials are not.
Yeah, and honestly, that's where some of the stuff gets out of line.
See, I can look prepared, let them, elected officials, know they have their salaries free, you need to contact, I, are, are, are the court to send out. So, how do you?
Well, uh, I'm sorry, I'm taking a little trip.
Well, what I'm saying, we gotta have some kind of, that's, that's one place to get out of line because they may not know, and maybe I sent Dan a letter with the amount there. Dan will go back with that, but he's, okay, here's what you can do.
Well, we, we have this hour, we keep an Excel worksheet, you'll all send an Excel worksheet with every position and the amount money. We can ensure this year that everybody gets sent an email with that copy. And along with that copy, we'll make a note, I will, I'll say, check your salaries and if, if salary increases, make sure to notify Dan. We can do that as soon, as soon as we get a budget from Dan.
You're right, Dan, if I tell Dan to increase it by too much, though, that's probably gets out of line accidentally, I'm not saying on purpose. See, he needs to, if I send something, Dan, he needs to grab his shield, here's what this position might be. And if I put in, I'll send him a letter for more than that, he needs to come outside, here's one minute.
Well, couldn't the court not send the letter? And it's like, here's what we sent this year.
You give me the court, I can do any one, whatever.
No, I, I, I think the court would say, I mean, I think I could send the letter out, represent Zing saying, hey, this is what the commissioner's court sent the salaries in, and then that would be taken out, elected officials' responsibility. And then we know, okay, that's what we approved.
But Dan still has to have a letter to put in the old file, but that would save the race.
So, now, you would then run there, well, and we send, uh, what the salary is gonna be for every individual we test.
He has to know the amount of the increases, the salary line, where the line is coming from, there's several things he has to.
Well, I think it'd be better than that company, once we agree, once we say this is what the salaries are, saying you're saying, sending that information. But I.
I'm saying, I think I do the salaries. What's, uh.
I think you say this salary's in the court's say.
Yeah.
But, but your government, that's what I'm trying to say, y'all, you are, are the court standing for the NICS is the job. That's a NICS that y'all.
Right, you're right.
You, that's all we need, that's all Dan needs to know, what that NICS is, I may have a foreman that, I'm not ready for him to write that again. But I could also make a mistake, a mistake, and send him a letter, and if Dan don't know what the NICS, that job is, he's gonna raise it. Something happened on between your admin and our admin, because they were supposed to be exactly the same. So somebody made a mistake in the increase, I'm not saying on purpose, I'm playing me, I'm saying, so, that's all I'm saying. Just Dan needs to know what that NICS is, and if we take the supervisor shit, that's sort of way above that NICS, he needs to call time out.
They would need to send Dan a copy of what we approved. Then, and then get a letter from the elected official, then, and say, okay, make sure, if I remember what was approved.
There's got to be no hires and no referrers. That's what I'm trying to get, Paul.
Okay, there was something there.
Uh, we're gonna need contract services in nine months.
That was it?
Two things are in.
Just, just these?
So, are we gonna track the foreman's salary?
It was.
Are we gonna track the foreman's salary?
Well, I'm.
You make that motion?
I'm, I'm making a motion, we did.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second, obtain them. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I'm, I, I am hundred percent for, um, just a little area of, of the timing, that's all I'm concerned about. Because we're, this is the first year that we're, we're living under a cap, and, you know, our cap's not changing, that's why you sent out the letter. So, I, I don't, I'm, but I'm all for making equal in this stuff now, so if we, if we wind up having revenue, good.
Well, you can vote yes now, and you cut that to that we don't have revenue to do it, then, then it's all off. I mean, obviously, we're, we're making decisions now based on what we think revenue is gonna be.
I'm good with it, we have the revenue, you know, because I'm not just this situation, but even all of us.
That's exactly right.
Even when our problems happen.
And I agree with it.
Does Dave get it fixed, how would we make it to number?
I don't know, if we're gonna bring Jerry or Mark, your woman, where?
Well, it's not filed until the budget is.
That's right.
Bob, like, we said here discussing, we're running workshops, but until that budget is loaded up and opened for and approved, anything, we've seen, anything can change above of that.
Judge Kirkpatrick, we're working on a budget right now, where Judge Kirkpatrick will file us a proposed budget July, uh, to the county.
That's true.
Then on August the sixteenth, y'all will come back and you will not leave exact tax dollars filled to figure me, they would be, here they are. And you should vote that day where you want to accept that proposed budget or amend it. And if you're uncomfortable with some of the decisions you're making now, you can amend that budget before we approve it.
And I tried since, since I came in very first, uh, I've tried to get us all on the same page, so that if I, I file my budget at the end of July, we've all agreed, here, here you get it, because I.
And last year, we did have to amend it because of the tax dollars. And we didn't have a final figure when the judge, we don't have a final figure when Judge files it.
That's right, that's right.
So.
Well, I just don't want y'all coming, talking on both sides of my mouth, the most fifty-three hundred dollars looks small that part, and it does. Because when you start adding all the departments up, it's like a whole must-able, it's small on that side, it winds up really hard.
And that's what's up, we'd say it's thirteen hundred dollars, but it's times four. Times, times four, and then add it up to fifty-two hundred, uh, but, it's your decision, you got a motion, say that, uh, raising the foreman's salary up to sergeant's salary.
Yeah, we are, I said, I think it's thirty-eight, six point five, and.
I'm sure, where I went to, I'm thinking. Definitely, that's.
I don't know when he's gonna be here, so, we can, I mean, we go, we can always go back.
And what, what's it gonna be, I mean, do we have to vote? I think we, we know, yeah, I think Keith is pretty much agreeing if, if the.
Yeah, I, I, it's like the funds, you know, we have to.
Say, so that's rewarding us.
Well, maybe I think the funds are a little weak.
The funds are a little.
I think the funds are a little weak, but I mean.
And, and I'm all for, let's, let's, let's deal with Susan's, let's deal with those clerks that get those wrapped out too. What I have to deal with.
I don't, I'm not.
But, I mean, whenever we, you wanna get that, let's, let's just get it all straight, let's do the coordinator, we got them straight. We got a foreman straight, and let's go to the clerks to get it straight.
I'm gonna make sure that's on, that's on the record every card.
Okay. So we don't need, we don't need to vote on that, I think we're in agreement. Well, whether it's for a, we'll get our motions, so, all that votes that I have, uh, both, both same side, motion period, it could still change.
Right. No, it's still made, like, this change.
That, that, I, I, I agree with that, and we can have, we would know exactly how it, you know. But we all, it's, I don't get it, Paul.
And I understand that they've done, what we're doing doesn't affect the general fund, but I don't want everybody to, you know, like you said, uh, it's like, well, you don't get it, I don't. Because that.
Well, part, part of it's gonna affect the general fund, if, if, if she makes any changes on the, now, not on the school, yes, but she makes any changes on those part, uh, that's part. That's gonna change the general fund, that's gonna change the general fund. But by my guys, we're gonna get hammered, it doesn't matter what, we're gonna get hammered, so.
We're here to make the best decisions that we can make, and.
For anything.
We get hammered, we get hammered.
That's, and that's my, my fact on it, we know every year, when we go in here, someone's gonna be offended, someone's gonna go out there and try, and, and we're gonna I have been through this our six year, and every time, so, and my deal is.
Yeah.
Well, my deal is, as long as we're making the best decision in our heart, as they can, in the, in the, in the courts, so. Okay?
I just wanted to make a quick note, uh, um, jail, we didn't make any changes on the jail, that's your packet I handed you, but the employees at the jail, we did have the nurse, the full-time nurse and the part-time nurse.
Is this here?
We had the full-time nurse and the part-time nurse, and I did remove those out of the budget and move their funds down to contract services for, we're paying that Southern Health. And I talked to Jake, and he's fine with his budget, and he's fine with that change. And then.
Yeah, that's what it should be.
Yes. And then we made no changes, uh, in the sheriff's department budget. The sheriff is good with what he has now, so I just wanted to let you be aware that I didn't make that change on the nurses.
Oh, back in jail, it's a second, see, I noticed that, uh, the request of two hundred and fifty contract services, we jumped it up to three twenty-six.
That's the nurses.
Okay, that's the nurse.
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's where we pay that, so, is the Southern Health that is now doing that. And I think the court needs to look at what Jake's done. I mean, he's, he's done an excellent job out there, you know, and, and I think that the Southern Health is healthy because our inmate medical expense, you can look at the trend, in, not two thousand nineteen, we spent two hundred and twenty thousand. And this year, we've only spent thirty-two. So, I think that change has caused a great savings.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see a trend from ninety to three twenty.
Yeah, we went, we were at ninety thousand in eighteen, then we jumped to two twenty, now we're down to thirty-two.
That's what my smart budget, kind of you budget, you jump from eight to two twenty. Well, then, you don't, then, you don't know.
You don't know.
And I tell you that.
We don't know what this virus, I think that if we hadn't had a, if Danny got there at the jail for this virus.
I'm just not kind of worried.
Yeah, well, he got that right.
I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, that new change, I think that was all, that was that call or two.
You talk to the sheriff?
Uh, yes, I do, I'm basically the sheriff, please give us a quick.
He's doing with his budget. So, same budget again last year?
Yes. Do you have questions, Dan?
I mean, that's it. I don't think we're, I think we're doing a good job of budgeting. If, if we've got it for the points or good with the budget and getting that issued, I think that, I think that's true.
This next little deal was just kind of some estimates. Everybody's kind of wondering about the tax rate, where we're headed. Um. We'll kind of just go over this and, and don't hold any to any of this, it's nothing set in store, but I'm not a pricer. Mr. Hyde is the, Mr. Hyde is the expert, but. We've got a lot of new terms this year that we're all going to have to get each study.
No, the taxes.
No, we do, we're good, we're, we're doing away with the effective tax rate.
It is now your known revenue.
It is now your revenue.
Usually when I call and check the tax rate, it will happen. I, uh. I went to the state comptroller's website and the forms to figure your known revenue and your voter approval rates were there. Unfortunately, they don't calculate, don't you put figures in, so you still have to manually go to a calculator and do some calculation. I have that over there several times. But if you look at, uh, these are the sheets for you to review when you get back to your office. If you look at the packet that I gave you with the rates, the first sheet you have is our tax rate that we're in right now. And when we speak of known revenue rates, and this is just kind of a learning tool for all of us. The known revenue rate generates us the same amount of money that we had in nineteen from our levy for twenty. So if you look at nineteen, I break in, our, the tax levy for the county in the special road was fourteen million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If you look at the twenty-twenty known revenue, which you can see the ratings for county, for the, for the M and O side was point four seven three six four three oh this year. That will lower because our appraisals, our, our property appraisals have risen this year, our rate will lower. So it, just on my projections, which this will change, understand, we're looking at point four three six three one nine. And then y'all maintain your ten cents on your special work tax. So if you look at the levy, the, the levy's not exactly the same, it's close to four hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference, but that's what, that's what the known revenue tax does. It brings our tax rate where we are now down, where we're generating some amount of money to start with. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So to start our budget with, that's why we budget our revenue figures that we had last year right now.
So, uh, are you saying our tax rate right now would be point four seven three six seven four three?
No, that's what it is.
No, our tax rate now is, uh, all funds is point six one four two three oh four six four.
That includes debt service.
Yeah.
We don't, you don't include debt service to figure your, to figure your rates. The debt service is separate.
Okay.
So you take it out. So we're, if you take the debt rate off of the rate now we have, it's point five seven three six seven four three oh, which is on the two thousand nineteen rate right here. Right here. So that's what we are, that's where we're at right now on maintenance and operating and special work tax.
And you projected going to four what?
To the point four three six three one nine?
Plus.
Plus the ten, so you're looking at, it's going from point five seven three six to point five three six. Because we had nearly an eleven percent increase in pricing.
Yeah.
So that, that, that's just staying the same, that's not.
That's keeping our revenue at the same rate.
No new tax.
No new tax, known revenue. So that's why your revenue in your budget, we start with just what we had last year, okay? Now, in the past, you've been able to look at increasing that rate right there, that point five three six by eight percent. But we see it go to now down to zero point five, which is one point out of five.
But you haven't figured that yet.
Well, that's your next page.
Okay.
Your voter approval rate.
Okay.
And, and these are just, these are just estimates, something for us to look at, okay? Because that will be different because we don't have rolling stops included in these rates. I don't have figures for protests, uh, I don't have figures for any properties that went to court, that, and we have, there's the new worksheet, and I have, is, I have to put the figures on this. If you look at the calculation, we now can include any increase we had in indigent defense from
Comes to all.
Last year to this year, but it went through June, it went through June the thirtieth, so we just finished. So I haven't put any figures together for that. There's also, you can, you can take off any inmates that you had at the jail that you had to house that weren't taking the T D C after forty-five days, I believe, you know, I would have gone home to that. But I'm listing on my list, sir, everybody is going to mark that to zero this year because we can do a hundred percent. We can capture a hundred percent of our money for all of the T D C inmates we're housing right now through our care staff. So it's, you're, it's more costly.
But you've got to get a report from the sheriff's office.
Yes, and we have, we, uh, our office has already notified Jake, and he's supposed to be getting us, and we won't file that until we're finished, you know.
Can't hear both of them.
No. But we would rather get a hundred percent on housing those individuals versus just having a tax rate out this year. I mean, that's the more cost of that.
True.
So, um, any, any inmate we are housing at the jail now that was supposed to be transferred to T D C, and because T D C is not accepting inmates now, we will recover that cost from the care staff. So that's good news.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yes. We will. Then if you look at your next sheet, voter approval rate, that's where, now, I face, I brought this one up. The P and T, the truth of taxation literature says one point oh three five. Now, Mr. Hyde is willing to have it advise us, if we do one point, exactly one point oh three five, would that trigger the, the election? You know, he made revenue that we did one point over three, you know? Because now it's not an ad election, y'all know that, once you go over that rate. And so, we will, I would, the court, I know the court will do the recommendation Mr. Hyde, you know, gives us.
It's a, it's not as critical, critical as it used to be, from my understanding. If you go over that and it triggers an mandatory election, then the voters say no, it just goes back. It doesn't go back to the known revenue.
I have gotten that one. This is all new.
That's what I'm saying.
Um, and unfortunately, you know, with the, with the virus, all our, our training was canceled.
Sure.
So we couldn't rely on webinarers, which are, they're not as good as they're not for me. I enjoy being at a, at a training where I can talk to other officers, and, you know, you, you stay to get better for my.
You're not, when you can ask questions.
You can ask questions.
I, I guess you still can with this.
I guess the, the, the three point five, would that affect the special road taxes, the voters voted that again?
Well, that's a new question, because if you, if you look, see, I have to get into calculations. Mr. Hyde will have to do a calculation for maintenance and operation, and then he'll have to do a calculation for special road. Because these calculations are based on your levy, well, that maintenance and operation levy is higher than your special road. But I have a task, if, if you look at that worksheet on page three of the maintenance and operating, it says counties only add together the known revenue rates for each highway county levies. So your actual road would have reached ten cents, and you did the point oh three five, only came up to point oh nine seven oh seven. We did not get back to the ten cents. So y'all are gaining money there, so you're, we're taking a hit on the maintenance and operating side for that, for those cents, they are pennies.
Thank you.
But, yeah, you know, if that's what it chooses.
But that's how much you're lost, that's how much I have handled it.
Yeah.
Now, this new, I still won't change that, I, I'm, I'm on circle on this.
Right, right.
So, but, but for figures today, I put it back to ten cents. I lowered, I lowered the M and O rate because it actually was point four 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 two five. And as you can see, I lowered it to point four three six three one nine to get y'all to your ten cent rate right now.
Yeah, that's the variable, I mean, I hear what harder to say it, but I'm saying, well, the voter's voting ten cents, but Austin said, you're going to go to three point five. And Burke says, yeah, but we're not going, don't, don't, don't buy ten cents, the voter's probably going to have, okay, then we cut the maintenance operating and, and so we, the county takes the hit, which area takes?
The, and the maintenance and operation.
The general.
The general.
Yes, same thing.
It does.
Well, it's the maintenance and operations side.
That's right.
Is lowering. You know, y'all, y'all give the excess on special road, but, um, that's the way Mr. Hyde has pleaded it since we've had the special road tax, which is telling me in like three years.
Right.
And, I mean, we will have to, we'll have to decide on which one he, he got, the court will have to do what he did. And I'm just doing what we've done in the past, so. But, the last page, I kind of summarized for you. You know, you can see what the two thousand nineteen rates are, what your levies are, and your, what, what the twenty-twenty would be if you went to the voter approval rate.
If you went to the voter approval rate.
Uh huh, which is the, uh, three point five. So, I just wanted y'all to kind of have that to look at and. Might be some interesting reading and studying for you. I was just hoping that, you know, it will help. Help us get used to the new terminology and how it works and, and, because this house deals in. It's been a difficult career for everybody, you know. My list are just full, you know, people are just scrambling.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate all that info.
I know, I need some regulars, boy.
Yeah. Get all my board and.
So, so, uh, Cindy, I guess the total, uh, maintenance and operations rate would be point four five six eight seven three, uh, estimate?
With the, it, with the three and a half, yes, sir.
I think, of course, we went over there.
Right now, it's at the point four seven, yeah, if you go over that, it's been on ad collection.
Yeah.
And you have to have that rate, we have to have that rate set by August the seventeenth if you're even anticipating having to work that much. Once you get past August the seventeenth, if you had passed that tax rate, if you don't have, you have to keep it in under.
So, if you went above the, the three and a half, you would still have to budget the three and a half, the, the three and a half, because you would have to budget everything on three and a half. Because if they roll it back, it comes back.
And if they roll it back, you have your election in the river. We, we nail out our tax savings, the personal owners, people's already paying their taxes. And then leaving any revenue.
Right.
And then the principal district would have to rescind bills out, I mean, it's not, I mean, I don't know how you can even come ahead.
Well, you see, and he's saying that's how, you know, we ran the risk is that on that three cents, that cost to the principal district comes back to the county. On that, you know, the, the remailing, the mailing, and all that, and then the postage on the city, the refunds, and all that just comes to us.
And this, this figures here includes, see, we gained eighty-five billion dollars in new property. So that, that, when we figure the calculation on, in the tax rate, you pull that out, of course, so you gain that money. So when we look at, like, the general fund's gaining six nine five, if, if this was true. Um, the big chunk of that is from the new property business.
And I said that was eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, I mean.
That was before the, uh.
Eighty-five.
And, and that's a price.
A price rate, not a price, a price of life.
That's something that the, the three point five, you, that's new product, that's new product.
You back that out before you start this.
That, that's good.
See, we worked off the tax levy, and then we add the frozen taxes back. Because see, you take the frozen out and you take the new property to get your levy in your figure. And then as you can see on these frames, you, you, I add back what frozen property values are. I add that, that's income to, to the county, so, you know, once, once we get there, you know. So, you know, once, once we get there, you know, you add that back. All that's taken away from your charge. And then, right, there's another thing that y'all need to, to be thinking about is we budget 3% of the 110. Scott's already called the judgment, I, due to the circumstance, we're not in a place that's fine. But, we don't know what the collection is going to be.
Did we, any, no. Well, what they, what they go with that, I remember. Scott, I said, always said budget on 95.
95.
And we're saying, too, he runs a math with everything. He makes me very uncomfortable, but he goes to 97.
We're going to make it.
97.
We'll make it this year.
Yeah, we got it.
We got it.
But he warned us about this next year.
He warned us about spending, because people are out of jobs.
That's right.
And they're not.
He said 97 next year.
Instead of 190, we're looking at 100.
We've always said that, and I agree with that, looking at the district and track record. I mean, 93, they had collected 100.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, he feels very comfortable with the 97.
And us, and I didn't do going into next year.
And you know, it's critical as it used to be, because we had no money in our fund. And we had to be, we had to hit it to a T. Now, at least, if we get in trouble, we're going to get in trouble one year and next year. We're going, we're going to fix it, we're going. If we have to budget on 97, we're going to fix it.
Yeah. And we, and Cindy, I had that discussion, you know, I think. Where we're at back then.
Well, thank you.
Where we're at today.
To every person.
That's, that's right. And I give you guys the credit. I think y'all have done a great job of budgeting. I know we get, we get hammered. But where we are is a tribute to the leadership and the elected officials of the county. I know some of them, you kind of, okay, you're kicking them five miles away, but, but they do a good job. Once, once they get your budget, let the, the elected officials do a good job. I, I, I guess that, when the sheriff said he's good with that plan, that I'm thinking, I'm calling it a start. Because, you know, we've been trying to get that budget, or realistic budget, set up from the beginning. And, uh, that's, that's good news.
And he, he asked me in court last time, what our, I gave you the expenditure for where 10% under now on general fund. And you said, what was 19? We wound up under, it was 4.62%. So, we were right at 5% under our budget last year, which equated to 880,000 dollars or so. If we did that this year, that's about 900. But any kind of under budget on our expenses, that's raising our front line.
Yeah, because yeah, it's going to be more than 100. And what? I recommend it this year.
Of course, I'm beginning to see a decline. We didn't see it until May. The court revenue really came down in May. And I'm not sure what June, the business department sees in June.
And we'll get sooner than that, but we're going to be way behind on the revenue.
The tax office is down some as well, but I didn't change your tax office budget revenue. Uh, in fact, they increased it a little bit because those people got rest of their vehicles.
Yeah.
Now, the court system.
It's complicated.
Yes, because the troopers aren't able to, you know, I don't think, law enforcement's unable to do a, to, and they're not a revenue generating center for the county. But, you know, it does help a little bit when they are able to write tickets. But I would like to know, I wouldn't, you know, I, they're out there for public safety right now, where they need to be. So we can, we can deal with that. I did have to test some of the J K revenues, but that's fine. They weren't that big of an impact to us in the end. And then one other little, I wanted to show y'all. I get a lot of questions as to why our employees can't make the same that Henderson County and Coffin County. You know, people come into my office and they're like, Coffin County pays 10,000 more. Henderson County pays 10. So, just for FYI, I pulled Coffin and Henderson's tax bases this year.
Did you give that to us?
No.
Okay.
I can't, I'd be happy to.
You want to spear it, did you?
Our budget right now for general fund, 60% is personal, okay? So we have 40% to operate now. And when a neighbor comes to me and says, well, I can go to work at Coffin for 10,000 or 15,000 more, Coffin County's general fund tax levy for collections is 40 million, 820,000 dollars. You can look at ours, and ours, uh, this year is 16. 16 million, and that's Runway Bridge.
And that's 40.
40 million for Coffin County, and that's just their general fund. And Henderson County is 25. So yes, that can pay, they're in 44, uh, because they're, they're a principal bad use for so much higher demands of county.
Did you do a comparison of, okay, you said 60% of our charges to salaries? What percent of Coffin County?
I don't have, I don't have that.
Well, that'd be easy, it'd be good.
I don't, I don't have a budget, so.
Okay. Oh, my, uh, 60% of Henderson County's revenue goes to salaries.
Personal.
Uh, 40 for salaries. I wondered what the percent had, because that, Coffin and Henderson, was it, is it 60, 40, what?
And when we say 60%, that's free dues and everything, you know, that's, that's all inclusive for our employees. But, you know, our employees are our most valuable asset. They, they're, they're what makes Henderson County. And that's what, what runs Henderson County. Your tax office, everybody, that's what we're here.
We're working here because we love it here.
Exactly, I have a passion for working here.
Well, I, I greatly appreciate that school, not considering that, and if I wanted to, I could win Dallas by 400. I chose to stay in the family, because I always figured I would travel up there and that I would buy, I got zero, matter of fact, I spent it one.
If you get Dallas traffic, you're good.
Exactly, and you can get, you know, I get it. Do we need to have, this was the last budget period that we had sticked? Do we need to stick some for next?
We, we probably did, just to go over some of these suggested salaries to come look at.
Well, I'm not one for salaries, I'm not a little bit excited.
Yeah, right.
I think, y'all will give me time to get all these changes in that we made this way and the revenue figures back to where you are now.
When are we looking? We'll, we'll have to make a decision on the executive salary first, right?
Well, we, we can't do, we, we've got to know what we're going to have, what money we're going to have.
You won't know that, because I was saying, and that's too late for salaries. We never, we, we never did those.
We never know, we were, we were having any idea.
I'm just giving.
Yeah, that's, that's what, so, so that's, that idea, you give it as good as possible.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. And I think, and I, and I think, Sandy, we're working off of it. Last year's, we know it will get back. How much back? That is, is, is a question. But I'm looking July 27th, uh, you had to notice a period.
I looked at, yeah, we got to take.
Yeah, we get July 25th, it's deadline for chief of private, certain private.
See, I have to take that, add it to the news paper on July 27th on the elected official salary.
Exactly, we just need to cross it over 3% off every night.
Yeah, we, we got to have it. But we will have to decide that before.
If you set a, if you set a meeting for next week, I prefer to make it like Thursday. I know, I know, some of y'all watch it Friday, but you gotta give me some time to get my changes in.
So when do you want it, Cindy, what do you think?
I'd rather have it Thursday. If we do it next week.
Are you saying the 13th? No, I'm sorry, are you saying the 9th? But that's, that's, that's our charge.
Our charge. I can have it up in, I can have everything changed and refilled by now. There's very little, I mean.
If we, if we need them.
Or if you need to, you put that in the next 38, I don't know.
3% is 1625, right? That's what I just got here.
I'll be right back.
I'll let those down, it's good. That was the bottom paper right there. The one that, now we did change the fee salaries up and everything in my.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Now, that's a book. And that one, that includes the, the acres that we had on ancient.
You grew it, right.
Well, I guess we've got to decide this one, because corporate is, we're going to go for what's allowed on our increase, or we're going to say no, no revenue. I guess we've got to decide that. Because I think you got to go, because the limits, you know, that border, where you're saying.
That's right.
We're not going to operate, but we're going to get a 3, 3 and a half percent increase.
There's, I, I, I believe, there's, you have to go to 3 and a half. There, there, and you're going to buy it to back. I think, well, you're right, it's going back, you're, but your income is going up.
No.
I'm like, if you raise it at 3 and a half with the cost of living, and everything we've got, insurance, fuel, everything coming up, if you come up 3 and a half, you're, you're still going to buy it.
Look, look, I don't want.
The cost of living.
Yeah.
So how can you provide more services and everything? I mean, I think.
There's a lot of stuff that is excluded from the 3 and a half percent.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to borrow a bunch of them. I, I, I agree, we've done it, but what I, what I told the elected officials yesterday, yesterday, that mean? What they have done, Austin, has encouraged the counties to go borrow money.
Absolutely, man.
There's no way possibly could encourage the counties because you can still borrow the money, collect that for dental service, and go to 3 and a half percent. But they believe that we're just, we're just up there wasting a bunch of money? I mean, they, they, Austin believes that.
And, and the hardest here, funds are the rubber, ready, you've got materials.
That's right.
Materials.
Look, look what they did. Even with right now, fuel being down, and all the materials, I think that's why that's here.
Right, quite good. It's not for 3 and a half, too. It's only if you say at 3 and a half, you're going to buy it. And so, the counties, right now, I think we're in good shape. I think we're going to be in good shape. But with this 3 and a half percent, I think, five years from now, we're all in good shape.
Maybe they'll wake up in Austin before then, not very long.
And you know, we try, and my hats off to, to county clerk and district clerk, they're going paperless, which saving on cost of paper, file cabinets, file, you know, file folders, that's small. I mean, but every effort helps and, uh, the treasurer's office, Kitty and I have already been listening about trying to go paperless on the building, you know, trying to get the invoices standing, or we're going to have to keep all that paper and all the records, you know, they're in the computer. But those are, those are small. Y'all have the big ones. When the material comes up, I think that's, so.
And we all hope, Austin, they can fix roads, it's money. They don't have the money. And you don't have the money to fix all your roads, right? I mean, and if I'm here.
And the only way a county can generate revenue is through your taxes. That's, that's your revenue, and, and that's hit your citizens. So we're already carving.
That's right. So they're going to have to figure out something, you know. But what they're going to do is fix their issues, right? Because now, they would, what you said, table that 1.6?
Yeah, 11.7, man, on their budget.
Okay, 11.7, and they're coming, oh my goodness, we've got a problem. What if you said 3 and a half?
Yeah. And, I don't know, 3 and a half is 3 and a half.
That is accurate.
They're going to be having more unfunded minutes.
That's exactly, is that, they said, they said, well, we've got a problem, let's shift this. We have to wait, we have to shift it now to the one that only can raise 3 and a half. It is just.
Well, no, you have to raise forward, but you have to go out. For about every year, every year, they, they centralized the government board.
Yes.
Eventually, it will just be, uh, we won't have any control locally here, we'll get our orders from the state.
That's right, I think that's good.
It is good. Oh, it's down, but you're going to adjust the mileage to your capitalizing figures.
Well, that, you know, that's something we can talk about. I, uh, I figured last year it was going to cost 14,000 dollars. And I think we put it 12 a year. But it's, it's something, everybody, I, I mean, it's gone down a little bit. Gas prices have gone down. Yeah, y'all know, something to discuss, to talk about on that. Right now, right now, I don't think we did it for that.
Okay, I, I have a problem. Whatever you guys want to get.
I'm good for this.
Okay, we, we can talk about this. That's fine.
Next year, the gas will have to reconsider.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, we can have that, look at our Runway Bridge, uh, fuel, look. Yeah. Way, I don't. Absolutely.
That's good. And that's what I think, they helped in the hand, and they helped come about price and stuff, and you lock it in. I mean, that did more, we don't know that long, but they come in and promise all that, and then backed up when they figured out that it's going to deliver to all the places. Would it still not be good to lock in? Uh, and, and pay whatever they can show. Or did they, no, it's, it's like 500 dollars to deliver it, y'all, I don't know. Did it, did they name what, what people would do?
It was kind of, uh, a play on, we're going to say that, yeah, Chief Paul, you got to tell you, I don't know. That didn't include delivery.
Well, you know, I, I think that did those a good job.
Well, and, and, and do go with, uh, if you look at, zoom the price, we're down there, we're paying about that. Just, it's 20 years, what the bank has.
Yeah.
Wait, wait. We lost 100 dollars.
Okay, so we'll have our, we're going to set a meeting for 9 o'clock. Will you allow the bat? That's good for you, I got used to it.
I'm trying to take some vacation.
So we're going, we're going to do what is written, we're going to have the revenue. Grow at 3 and a half. Well, pretty much written, or that's, we're going to have to deck this revenue, grow at 3 and a half.
Oh, wow.
It's what I was thinking, maybe.
Uh, bring it.
I was thinking maybe.
We go to approval, I'm getting over the revenue. I'm just watching, I just, I don't know.
I was like, you got to be ready. We got to be ready to vote. We got to be ready to, when we can vote, what is, what is.
I understand how it is.
You want to speak to the, 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 the election.
If you go over, and the voters say no, it don't go back to no my revenue, it goes back to the voter approval of 3 and a half.
Right, right, yeah, because I tell you, it's still, it's, yeah, you have to go.
You're going to have to go, because I'm still, she's going to make, her, she's going to make.
Definitely.
Every school.
I was trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to, 3 and a half.
Yeah.
Every school. Every school, that's my.
You need to be.
It's going to hard. That's not. They said three and a half.
Absolutely.
Yes, but even worse than that, if the county officials are up to two, I can do cash and bank, they'll just be two and a half percent. They don't work, they don't get the money from the startup.
And that's where Austin is in the middle of. And because they went out there and said that the only way the school will survive is if they can't get more money, they'll burn.
And that's what they. Yeah.
Like say the topic, or did, did that break it, yeah?
Can we set this, uh, next budget period, the next week on, on that, uh, thirteen to fourteen?
Fourteen to the election day.
What about the thirteenth?
I'm, 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 I'm going to go with eighteen. Is that getting out there pretty late for, you're going, by the thirteenth, if you set it for thirteenth, you're going to have to decide something on raises.
Yeah, I think the vote will do that.
Oh.
We're going to do that, that. He's going, but he's taking my traction.
I was, I was going to try to take off the nine to ten.
If I could, will you, you go.
We're going to, that, that, I'm three. Once I found out what the rest of the court feels on, on doing the voter approval, which is three and a half percent increase. I'm totally good with three and a half percent. Right.
I'm three.
I'm three.
I'm pretty close forward on you.
Yeah, let's, let's take care of elected officials. Let's look, let's look in the pollings first.
Yeah, if, if.
But again, you have to look at the elected officials. Now, that's not, if, if, if you plan on giving elected officials, that's not giving the piper, which she cares to do on the twenty-seventh of July.
Yeah. If we can afford it, if we can afford it, let's, let's do it across the board.
Right? I think you got to take care of your employees.
Yeah.
I think, and Sandy and I had discussed, I think there's, and children, a lot of your candidates this year are not giving raises. A lot of counties are not giving raises because I think they're, uh, the.
Yeah, the one candidate gave raises for years.
Yeah, and we didn't give, we didn't. But I think this is a hot opportunity here, we can afford it, we can close that gap. And if we give a raise and the other counties don't, then we close that gap some. We're not ever going to get, we're, we, we can't pay what. Just not causing, I mean, the wrong girls came in and all the chemists, but we certainly tried to do the best we can do to close that gap. And, and the, uh, you said like the school system, what they're doing is, they got teachers, they got a, the teacher coach, they do the class. Good for you. Okay, buddy, crosses your arms.
Yes, that's.
They're all huge. Yeah.
You were here, you probably ran that game, but, but, you know, in, in oh-nine, we deducted one point five percent from everybody elected officials too. And in two thousand and ten, we did the same thing.
You were paying for all that?
Yeah, we, we just, uh, you know, and, and when, when we were doing that, well, other counties were in good shape and they were giving raises.
Yeah, yeah. No, we do, we need to, employees want to make this like. We forget the whole thing. I think something we want to, what, what day, if you go down the thirteenth?
That Monday. It's just two, we was going to do it on Thursday.
We'll be checking.
It's a night. I mean, we're, we're, we're.
It's a night.
We got to do the money. So, just, that was Thursday, so just switch it on, the money.
You know, it's, uh, it's going to be busy out there because my, my host family's saying, because my day to go before the, the B board, I'm six, August.
August.
It's six in August.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm. I told him, I'm, 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 I'm. Bye. You know, he's over that area, bye, whatever, you, yeah, I'm going to go.
Well, and they already cautioned us that, you know, the, the certified role will get July twenty-fifth. It may change, you know, because there's still, because of the.
I imagine. I have a two and a half year in, uh, on that thing that nine in Grand Celine, but we could start at ten.
About ten o'clock.
If we could start at ten, go from ten to twelve, we could. Okay, let's do it.
Okay.
So, do y'all want me to go ahead and start putting some figures together for thirty percent?
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah.
I would.
I can do, uh, elected official, I can do the boys out only, and I, and I can put eighteen one for elected officials.
Are you? Yeah, let's look, well, if we can, we can squeeze that in, we won't, but we got to make it, we'll see. But first, we'll take care of the employees first.
And, and, and when you have time to dig this stuff that, that we want to echo out on the, on the deputy deal, uh, on the chief deputies, that we want to try to get equalized?
Sorry.
You what?
No.
The deputy part, the.
Oh, the deputy, of course, yeah. She don't like all the Chinese, she don't have all the Chinese.
She has all the Chinese.
I mean, she says she don't.
The Chinese on deputy part is what would have them. I'll do this in my.
All minds clear? We got it?
We done.
Okay. We'll see y'all have a grand fourth of July. Enjoy your holiday, burger, you enjoy your vacation. We get one every four weeks.
Two days, maybe. I'd make the most of which year.
Okay, is there a second? I got it, say okay, all in partway, I, we are charged.
Hey, it's been three days.
No, that, that was.
I know.
We're not the name concrete.
We're taking Ohio.
We're not no legend with those papers.